I will give the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Lord, we ask for your blessing. We ask you to protect those who are in the way, in harm's way with the hurricane. We ask you to keep those along the coast safe, and the law enforcement, and the power companies, and all those who are going to give aid, keep those safe while they are there as well. We ask you to help us make good decisions tonight, decisions that will help shape our county not only for today but for years to come. We ask you to guard all law enforcement and all our soldiers abroad. In these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would Nick Cotton, Sandy Cranford, Kenya Powell, Pam Cato, and Scott Kendrick please come forward?
Under appearances, we have Neil Brennan to provide the annual report of the Lake Wally Marine Commission.
Good evening. Neil Brennan, 1531 Reflection Point Boulevard in Belmont, North Carolina. Currently the chairman of the Lake Wally Marine Commission, and I thank the council for inviting me back to share with you what we've been doing here for the last year to help support the lake. We have over here our mission statement, which we try to uphold in what we do, and several of the things that I'll talk to you tonight briefly are reflected in that mission statement. Safety and the environment are probably our two most important areas of concern. In safety, I briefed you last year on the lake, the life jacket program we had where we distributed the life jackets to the law enforcement folks, so if somebody's caught out on the lake without one, they can give one to them without having to ruin their day. That's working real well. That's under the auspices of Commissioner Branch Blyant from York County. We did some safety spots on the local Fox television station before the, actually during the National Safe Boating Week, and we also provided many of the outlets safety tips that they could choose to air anytime during the year, particularly before the big major holidays like 4th of July, Labor Day weekend, at their discretion. On buoys, we ensured that all the no-wake buoys in North Carolina had to be in place before the big Memorial Day holiday. And then the floods came, and all those buoys, most of them got washed around. So we had to go do it all over again. That's what we do in North Carolina. One of our functions is to make recommendations to the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission on the placement of any no-wake buoys. In South Carolina, you all handle that. We'll make a recommendation, and once it's approved, the local authorities place those buoys and maintain them. We do it up in North Carolina. We thought that we could turn that over to the North Carolina Wildlife Commission, but we were misinformed. They don't do that either, so we've got it for the foreseeable future. We had to purchase some new ones, as indicated on the outline I provided to you all. And I also provided a picture in one of the handouts there of some buoys we placed over at the Yachtsman Marina in North Carolina. Now, you say, "Well, I'm in South Carolina. What are you showing me that for?" Well, there's a body, a little island there, people coming out of that cove and zipping on down through there, and it was a dangerous situation. That distance there between that little island and the nearest pier over on the side there, it's about 200 feet. In North Carolina, you've got only 150 feet that you can be by a dock or a pier, and if you're within that, you have to go at idle speed. In South Carolina, it's only 50 feet. So I invite that to your attention for some comments I'm going to make a little later on here this evening. But needless to say, there's a good chance that those buoys would not have been approved in South Carolina because of the difference in the distance that they're allowed for no-wake. Just hold that thought if you all would. The environment, water samples, we continue to get great support from the entities I briefed you on last year, Mecklenburg County Land Use and Environment Service, and Belmont City, and South Carolina Department of Health and Environmental Control. And then we had a new one this year. The Kataba Riverkeeper Foundation came up with what they call a swim guide, and that involves folks buying into the program, and we supported that. We bought in. We bought a site, and we picked the site to be the Little Allison Creek Sandbar. That's an area where some of the samples weren't being taken, but we know lots of people go down here in South Carolina. What that is, is they would go out and sample, and then put on an app the results of those samples, so people could go see what's the quality of water where I want to go swim down there at that sandbar. And apparently, there've been over 7,000 hits this summer on that particular app. So again, another way that we're supporting the health of the river and the people who use it, the safety of the folks who use it. I mentioned last year about the sterile gas carp that we, along with the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission, put in the lake to eat down the hydrilla. Well, there hasn't been any, and I was concerned last year that they didn't put it in. They didn't put it in again this year. So we suggested it might be a good idea to have a guy in charge that come tell us why. So we got Dr. Brett Harris, the Aquatic We Control Program Manager at Duke Energy Company, gave us a really good detailed presentation on it as to how this thing takes so long to show itself, and if it doesn't, it's pretty safe, you don't have to do this. Goes into all this biology. He's the doctor, I'm not, but basically, he said, "Don't sweat it. We're okay for a while, and we'll keep monitoring. If we need to put more carp in there, we will." So I'm going to trust him on that one. The shorescaping program that I presented last year, we had this young intern from Duke do a little study about what kind of plants could we plant along the river to stabilize shoreline. We shared those results with Lake Wally Marine, or Lake Norman Marine Commission, and also the city of Belmont, who is developing a park on one of the peninsulas there. We invited to their attention as well for their consideration in stabilizing the shoreline there if they choose to do that. We're not going to do that. We did the study. We're providing the information to those entities. If they choose to do it, fine. If they don't, well, there you go. The other thing we're doing is putting it on our website so that anyone who's on our mailing list, and we get those mailing lists through some of our Riverside contacts, can go online and see not just the one sheet that I've again provided to you in that package of materials that we hand out at the boat show, but also they can get the full-blown detailed slides of the presentation that the young intern provided to us. Very detailed and very, very well thought out, very well done. Riverside coming up next month. You all know the first Monday in October, it's the Supreme Court. First Saturday in October, it's Riverside on Lake Wally. So I want to particularly thank Councilwoman Love for her support of Riverside. We have some TV spots arranged for that, and that local Fox station is going to actually do a ride-along with us this year, so actually show the actual folks out there picking up the debris. And the registration is open on lakewallyriversweep.com. For law enforcement, another area where we support public policies, part of our mission statement, we've asked the law enforcement, "What can we do to help you? What do you need?" The good folks at Mecklenburg said, "Hey, we could use a second set of dive equipment for our other boat." Roger that. We can help you there. Sergeant Brett Mayberry down here in York County Sheriff's Department wanted some extra training aids for his safety courses that he teaches. He said, "We got you covered there too, sir." And Gasson wanted some stabilizing binoculars for Gasson County. Apparently, and I know this, on my ships, we didn't need stabilizing binoculars. It was pretty stable enough, but on a boat out on the river, it'd probably be a good thing to have, so we punted up for them. The other thing we're doing here, I briefed you last year about, is the Law Enforcement Center. We have had a long-time goal of trying to get a boathouse for the Gasson County Police Boat. They don't have a boathouse. They have to trailer their boat, so that takes time away from responses if they need to be there in a hurry. So we've been partnering with them, and then this Belmont Rowing Club, a little story here if you're building. Belmont Rowing Club, these are the folks that row the shells, and they teach rowing, and they have competition and so on. They've been looking for a place to put a dock for years, and they finally got a hunk of land up there in Belmont, south of a water treatment plant on a peninsula. And they deeded some of that land to the city with the idea that they could put their dock there, and the city would put in the FERC permit, because they figured that if the city's putting in the FERC permit, it had a better chance of getting through the process. So they did that. We learned about it and said, "Hey, how'd you like to have some police presence next to your rowing?" And they thought that was a marvelous idea. So we kind of piggybacked on that and put it in our little drawing for what we had hoped to achieve there. And then we found out that the fire department got a new truck, Belmont City Fire Department got a new fire truck. And when they hooked up their rigid-hauling flotille boat, rescue boat, it kind of stuck out the back end of the firehouse, a little too long there. So we asked them, "What if we had a two-slip boathouse down there? Would you be interested in that?" And they said, "Yes, we would." So our goal expanded a little bit, and we're partnering with the Gasson County Police and the Belmont Fire Department, the city of Belmont, to bring this boathouse together to enhance the police presence at the north end of the lake, which we think is a force for good in the community, which is what we're all about. And we're in a position to be able to help significantly on that. On the pollution, I just applaud the efforts of you folks in your new stormwater ordinance. That's tremendous, and we need more of that. And matter of fact, I'm talking with Commissioner Chacheron from York County, and she's part of our Water Quality Committee, and we're going to try to get a symposium together of various people from the counties that are knowledgeable as thing of these things, both York and Gasson, Mecklenburg. It's interesting, in Mecklenburg, they don't have a stop-work authority for their people on-site. They have to go through a magistrate, and I don't know how effective that is or how long it takes. But I suggested what you've done to them when I briefed them a month or two ago, planted that seed, and I think that'll be something that maybe we'll talk about with them about coming around to York County's way of thinking on that. I still believe that the people who construct these things are willing to pay the fines if they don't meet the requirements to keep silt out of the river, but it's just a line on them on their budget, and I think maybe we ought to take a look at that. So that's some of the things we might want to be talking about in the symposium that we hope to convene sometime later this year. As far as education and public relations, we do have a booth at the Mid-Atlantic Boat Show. One of the placards that we put up was this one right here, where we asked the questions of people who stopped up. "What about your life jacket? Do you have a right one for your child?" And we had several life jackets that were donated to us for the occasion to have them try on if they needed to. But again, getting the word out about life jackets for people wearing them on the river if they don't. And of course, the electrical safety business. What else did we do? I can't remember.
Oh, dust size, shoreline carbon monoxide. That's another one.
We've got a new thing called wake surfing, where folks are surfing right behind the boat, and there can be a buildup of carbon monoxide there. And if folks are sitting on the stern, you know, observing the surfer who's right there behind them, they could become overcome by this stuff, by this carbon monoxide. So there's a little pamphlet in there that I think I shared with you all in your notebooks last year, again, on the dangers of, I think it's "What you can't see can hurt you," is the title of that little one there. The other things we hand out at the boat show are in that manila envelope I provided you, a save-the-date card for Riverside. You get a lot of sign-ups for Riverside at that thing. The shorescaping handout, the one-pager, not the full-blown thing, and a couple of other items. Now, talk about one more of those in a little bit. And we get around, there's another big event coming up here later this month called Riverfest up in Belmont. Kataba Riverkeeper Foundation's putting that on, so we'll have a booth up there with some of these same things to hand out up there. And we thought it might be a good idea, if those of us on the commission knew a little bit more about the Allen Steam Plant and the Kataba Nuclear Station, it seemed to me that if we're going to be able to speak about the river, we probably ought to have a little better insight as to what goes on there. So earlier this year, we visited both those sites, and I was in the nuclear power business for quite a while. I worked at a nuclear power site, so I kind of inherently knew how they take care of things there and the security. Getting through security took about as long as the tour that they gave us. My goal there was to make sure that our commissioners were familiar with what went on at those sites. And we saw the improvements made at the Allen Steam Plant that were dictated by the state a few years ago to shore up their embankments and to repair their pipes, and every place we went where there was a body of water, there was a chemical sampling station there on their sites. So to speak for myself, I was impressed with how they handled things there and the degree of concern that they have for the coal ash, which has become a real bad name these days. I live on the river, and hey, I'm glad they're there. They provide power. And my never-humored opinion is they're doing it safely, so for what it's worth. We have a good website that Commissioner Goff helped design a year or so ago. It's got a lot of this information I've talked about on there, our shorescaping project, and a whole bunch of other informations. And she also helps with some of our press releases, one of which concerned the flooding at the northern end. I also included in the handouts that I gave you earlier a picture of some of the boats that came over the dam up there. Those boats, that's a picture of boats in trees, and some of them are still up there. I mean, it's taken a long time to recover some of this stuff. How we got involved with that, there was a call sent in to me from a gentleman who lives on a road right alongside the northern part of the river up there. He said, "Sir, can you help me? My house has got water in it. My dock has come apart, and it's hanging on by a thread, and we've got boaters up here going up to see what's going on, and their wakes, even though it's not a no-wake zone, are hurting us up here. Can you help me?" Well, I wasn't going to go up there and tie his pier up, but we put out a press release to say, "Hey, look, even though it's not a no-wake zone, please, slow down up there. These people are in dire straits." Kind of a service to the community is best we could do, but I wanted to share with you the extent of the picture worth a thousand words. That picture was taken by our Towboat U.S. folks who come to our meetings and support us during Riverside as well. So again, one of the services we provide when asked, and part of the cards that we have in there that are handed out to you gives our numbers, and the numbers of the police entities that can serve the community as well. The next big issue that I want to talk to you about, and it's more a for-your-information, a heads-up if you will, and that has to do with wake surfing. The June meeting, we had over 100 people at our June meeting where we discussed, and the key word was discussion, we were going to have a discussion about the possible restrictions on wake surfing. Well, I want to tell you, that word restriction took over from discussion right away, and there were pros and cons up there. There were the folks that wanted to wake surf wherever they wanted to, as long as they were within law, and the law in South Carolina, as you know, within 50 feet. But if you've got a boat that's ballasted down, designed to throw a huge wake, and you're within 50 feet of the shore, I'm not sure how far that is, but it's not too far, that wake can do some damage. And the other people on the other side were the ones who said, "I've spent thousands of dollars repairing my old pier." Now, key word, some of my old peers weren't built to withstand some of the stuff, so get with the program may be the answer. The other answer may be, "How about you all going out in the middle of the stream so your wake has a chance to dissipate before it gets to the shore?" Because there's plenty of times, like tonight, water skiing would be just great out there right now. Hardly anybody out there. But I invite this to your attention because a junior always invites the seniors' attention. This issue that may be coming your way, because some of those folks were pretty upset with the dam. One gentleman said, "I've got to ski in antique," so he's a big water guy. He had his boat alongside the pier, and he said, "That guy came by in his wake surfing boat, and he just came washed right off my gondola into my boat." So there may be a problem. We kind of diffused the meeting by suggesting right at the outset that we didn't pass any laws or make any rules or regulations, so you could hear a sigh of relief from some of those folks that were there to make sure we didn't tread on their rights, which is not our position to do so in any case. But again, it may be an issue that you all may have to face sometime, so I invite it to your attention for your consideration. Because one lake in Vermont has already banned it all together. Parts of the Willamette River are now banned from wake surfing, and in Missouri, they changed the laws to allow wider coves be susceptible to their laws regarding no-wake zones. Interestingly enough, one of the cards that I gave you in your pamphlet is this one on wake surfing. We had some of the members of the industry there that night, and their whole plea was, "Look, we have to wake responsibly." And he appealed to all those people who were there, the sportsmen who enjoy this, and the families that enjoy this. And he said, "The solution is for those of us who do this to self-police, to understand there's a problem, and to take action whatever we can to get our neighbors who are not following good common sense and get them out of the coves where it can do some damage." And the first thing on here says, "Stay at least 150 feet away from shoreline docks or other structures." Well, occurs to me that if you're too close to the shoreline, you're roding that shoreline, and that's part of sedimentation problem, not to mention the damage to people's property. So I called, I said, "Look, so we'd like to help you and hand some of these out at our boat show next year. Would you send me some?" And if you check carefully, the ones that they sent me said, "Stay 200 feet away," about 150 feet. Your guess is as good as mine as to why they changed that, but maybe they're trying to get out ahead of the game, and that's my purpose in bringing it up to you all, to get out of the game if you need to. We don't make any rules. We don't make any laws or regulations. Our job is to watch out for the lake and inform those who do about things that might help or not. So we also put a press release out on that meeting. We've never done that before. And a copy of that I provided to you all for your, look at it when you see fit. But that was a very interesting meeting, and everybody had a chance to speak. The last thing I have for you all tonight is kind of a farewell. Commissioner Goff has been an active member of our Lake Wally Marine Commission here, very thoughtful. She has represented York County extremely well with passion and conviction, and she's been the mainstay of our Riverside operation for years, and we're going to miss her. Thank you all for your attention. I entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you. Billy Dunlap, Executive Director of Rock Hill York County CVB, to provide us with an update.
All right. Mr. Chairman, council members, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Thank you for your service to York County. I will not keep you long, I promise. I want to give you, I know normally when I come and do my quarterly updates, we talk about events, and we talk about marketing, and we talk about things like that. What I want to do tonight is talk about the economic part of what we do, how tourism affects the economy, specifically in York County. I think a lot of times, that gets glossed over, but I want to talk, because we just got some numbers from South Carolina Parks, Recreation, and Tourism, and U.S. Travel just completed their 2018 numbers by county on the economic contribution that tourism has to the local economy. So I want to share that with you tonight, but this will be a little bit different than what we've done before, but I hope that you'll see my purpose at the end when we go through this. Our mission, and I think this is critical based on what I just told you, to create a thriving travel and tourism economy in York County. So everything that we do is based on driving the economy in York County. Purpose to develop an authentic unified identity for York County and to promote the long-term development and marketing of York County as a destination. Now, when I tell people that, and coming from my position and telling people that York County is not truly a destination, that sounds strange coming from someone in my position, but when you compare just in South Carolina to Hilton Head, Charleston, Myrtle Beach, those are destinations. Those are places you go to to spend weeks at a time. York County is not that, but we have a lot to offer in York County that drives the tourism economy. If you build a place people want to visit, you build a place where people want to live. If you build a place where people want to live, you build a place where people want to work. If you build a place where people want to work, you build a place where business has to be. And if you build a place where business has to be, you'll build a place where people have to visit. I think what I'm going to talk to you tonight is about how tourism drives the economic development, part of what York County does. And I'll tell you that David Swinson, who I know is in the back of the room, he and I have spent a good bit of time over the last few weeks discussing how economic development and tourism work hand in hand. And I think it's important that we recognize that going forward. We had a strategic plan workshop this past Wednesday. We had a strategic plan workshop this past Wednesday. Mr. Hudson and Mr. Swinson both participated in that. We will be presenting that strategic plan at our, at our annual meeting. But there's a lot of synergy between economic development and tourism. Now, how does tourism contribute to the economy of York County? In 2018, York County tourism generated $258.45 million in visitor spending in York County, compared to $245 million in 2017. It produced 40, almost $45 million in payroll. That's $45 million in payroll just from the tourism industry, compared to $43 million in 2017. It created $6 million in local tax revenues, compared to $5.79 million in 2017. It created $17.6 million in state tax revenues, compared to $16.83 in 2017. So as you can see with those four categories, tourism is on the, was on the rise in 2018. It generated $23.61 million in combined state and local taxes, compared to $22 million in 2017. It created 2,310 jobs that were directly attributable to tourism. In 2017, there were 2,250 jobs that were attributable to tourism. This is the only one that went down. In 2018, visitor spending increased by 5.5%. Now, when you say it went down, it still increased by 5.5% over 2017. In 2017, visitor spending increased 8%. That's what happens when you bring thousands of people to a BMX World Championships. On an average day in 2018, tourism spending in York County generated right at $64,000 in combined state and local taxes, $16,000 daily in local tax revenues, $48,000 daily in state tax revenues, and $123,000 daily in worker paychecks. Those are straight from U.S. Travel and the South Carolina Parks, Recreation and Tourism for 2018. Now, tourism tax relief on York County households. As a result of taxes generated by visitor spending in York County, each household pays $247, $247 less in local and state taxes. In other words, if tourism did not exist, each household in York County would pay $247 more in state and local taxes to replace the taxes generated by visitor spending. Now, here's the numbers over the last 14 years. You can see how tourism spending has increased. From 2005, there was $140 million spent on tourism in York County. In 2018, $258 million spent on tourism in York County. Now, economic development. One thing that Mr. Swinson and I have been talking about is workforce development. We know that there will be a time very soon that we will be in a situation where we will struggle to find hospitality workers. Now, we think about hospitality workers. When you go to a restaurant and you see a third of the restaurant is not seating people in that restaurant, it's because they don't have enough workers to cover that area of the restaurant. That's when it becomes a situation. Or when hotels close off a floor because they can't clean all their floors prior to check-in time, that's when it's time that we have to do something. We're not to that point yet, but most destinations across the country are. So we've talked about workforce development. We've talked about talent attraction. Today's visitor is tomorrow's talent. So when we bring people to York County, we're bringing them here in hopes that they may stay. Now, that's not good for my business, because I want you to come here, I want you to spend money, I want you to enjoy yourself, and then I want you to go home. And then I want you to come back and I want you to do the same thing all over again. But we know that there are talented people that we need in York County that are coming here to visit. They're coming to a soccer tournament. They're coming to Quidditch. They're coming to the Disc Golf Championships. So we need to figure out a way to keep them here. Now, our job is to showcase, showcase the community and drive visitation. That's our job at Visit York County. That leads to relocation and talent attraction. One thing that I didn't realize was a, a large part of what we do by default is relocation, because we see people every Saturday that come into the visitor center that are looking to move or they have already moved to York County. So we are the first face that they see and so it's our story to tell them all the great things about York County. Economic development begins with a visit. Every piece of economic development begins with a visit. Now, economic development, Mr. Swinson's job, he's judged on deals won, jobs created, and capital investment. That's economic development 101. If you look at tourism each year as an investment in an industry, that's what I would like council to do. Look at tourism each year as an investment in an industry. Don't look at tourism as a contribution to an organization that is not creating ROI. Because as you saw from those numbers earlier in my presentation, we, we've created an ROI. From 2005 to 2018, you can see the ROI that, that we have brought to York County. Tourism is a high-performance economic engine in York County. Tourism checks all the boxes of economic development. It creates jobs, it creates taxes paid, and it generates other economic investment. We are in the process of building 10 new hotels in York County, and there's more coming. We just opened one, we're getting ready to open another one this week, and we're currently running about 75, 76% occupancy on the hotels that we have. So it drives economic investment. It drives more attractions. It drives more restaurants. So tourism is an economic engine. Now, investing in tourism in York County creates a sure ROI. Tourism in York County has generated a positive return 12 out of the last 14 years. There's not a lot of industries that will produce a positive ROI 12 out of 14 years, and that's what tourism has done in York County. Now, when we talk about, I know that this council's dealt with, with spec buildings over the last few years, and I know that there was a time when that was a necessity in, in driving the economy. And I know that when you do a spec building, you're selling it, taking those proceeds, putting it right back into the fund to hopefully do another one, sell it, take the proceeds, turn it back, so it's constantly reinvesting in, in itself. That's what I want us to do with tourism. I want us to keep investing in what we're doing. Because as, as you can see by the numbers, it's, it's driving that part of the economy. And the last thing I want to do is to keep taking money and taking money and taking money out of that group and not investing it into what we're doing to drive tourism in York County. I think if we continue to invest in tourism, those numbers are only going to continue to grow, which grows accommodations tax funding, which grows hospitality tax funding, which grows pennies, state, local taxes, all of those things. Now, we're going to host our, our annual meeting. We've already produced our numbers for 2018, 2019. I'd love to share those with you, but if I did, I know the media would grab them and we would not be able to unveil them at our annual meeting. Annual meeting is September 26th at 5:30 to 7:30 at Southern Charm Events. All of you should have received an invitation to that. There we will do our report card for 2018, 2019. We will show you the significant increase in hotel room nights from last year to this year. The significant increase in event attendance. The significant direct economic impact increase, more than double what we did in the previous year. You'll see the significant increase in website page views, stories published, and visitor spending. All of those things are positive numbers from last year to this year. We will also unveil our five-year strategic plan for, for Visit York County. We will award the 2019 Visit York County Tourism Visionary Award, and we will unveil the cover of the 2019-2020 Visit York County Destination Guide. Like I said, this presentation's a little different, but I think this is an important, an important presentation in, in just reiterating the, the economic impact that tourism has in York County. And it's not just us, it's the city of Rock Hill that is participating in that as well. But it is, tourism is big business in York County. I know I say that every time I come up here, but it continues to prove itself each and every day. Be glad to answer any questions. Hopefully I did not over, overstate my time.
Do we have, I know you mentioned about the BMX World Championships coming, and when I was on the sports commission, we were having a conversation about how this will lead to whether it was future employers moving here, future residents. Do we have any kind of data on if in fact, did we land any new business or did we see more people decide to move here, kind of attached to that event?
I'm sure there are. I, I don't know specifically any as far as strictly BM, the BMX. I know, I heard a story today and I wish I could remember, but it was, it was someone that came here for an event. It was actually a Rock Hill Economic Development Corporation meeting today, but they talked about someone that came here with a Rock Hill PRT tournament and they actually relocated their company here. I wish I could tell you exactly who that was, but it was somebody in one of the business parks that the business relocated after the owner was here for one of their child's tournaments inside the city of Rock Hill. So I know there are instances of that, because we, we, we hear about those things. I can't tell you anything specific, but I do know that we see it every single weekend of some, something that brings somebody to York County and then they do what all of us did that have either moved here or moved back. You find something and you, and you fall in love with it. You know, whether you like to fish or mountain bike or, you know, play soccer or whatever, there's something for everybody. And, and that's, that's, you know, it's, it's good for the, for the relocation business. You know, it's not so good for us, because we continue to lose visitors that way, but, you know, I'll take that, I'll take that any day.
One more thing, are we gonna meet the deadline for the SIC tournament?
The, the SIC Men's and Women's Basketball Tournament is coming. They will be playing, it's the last week of February, first week of March, right around there.
Are they gonna have the arena ready?
Yes, well, the, the arena should be, should be ready by then. We're, we're hoping for sometime in the next couple of, couple of months, but SIC Men's and Women's Basketball Tournament will be here. That'll be, that'll be a big deal for us. That'll be a significant event, week-long Division II NCAA Men's and Women's Basketball Tournament. Thank you very much.
Patrick Hamilton to provide the quarterly Pennies progress update.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Got an update on your handful of projects tonight. I think there was one more slide before that. As always, just interrupt and ask questions whenever. If I didn't highlight a particular project you're interested in, just feel free to ask me about that as well. So we'll start out looking at project, projects that are currently under construction. McConnell's Highway, they have got the final lift of asphalt on probably 90% of the project. They have a little bit more work to do at the Heckle intersection, which should be wrapping up here shortly, I hope.
What shortly?
As quick as they can get in and pave it. I'm hesitant to give a date, because I've given you several dates before.
Two years ago.
I can only tell you what the contractor tells me, so I, soon. Highway 160 West, this one's progressing much quicker than that project, but as you can see here, they've gotten the curb and gutter, storm drainage, sidewalk down on, on one side of the project. This is standing near the North Carolina End, looking back south towards Highway, or towards Gold Hill Road. If you notice on the right side of the screen, all the utility poles have been relocated over there. They still have to come back and take down the poles there in the middle. But we've talked with the contractor and, again, I can only tell you what he tells me, but they are hoping to pave this section of, of the project before the end of the year to be able to shift traffic over and work on the opposite side, which would be the existing pavement now, work on that side. Hopefully that, like I said, they're hoping to switch that traffic this, by the end of the year. Highway 274, Pole Branch Project, this is on Pole Branch Road, looking towards Fuel Road and the River Oaks intersection up there. As you can see on the left side, they have gotten some asphalt down, widening that area. They will be doing the closing of Pole Branch Road between 274 and Fuel Road by the end of this year. They have some prep work to do before they can do that, which they're out there doing now. That'll be a six-month detour, which will route traffic down Fuel Road and back up to 274. This is a picture of the five-lane bridge being built over Mill Creek on 274. As you can see, they got the girders in there. If you notice, the, so the bridge deck will go on top of the girders. As you can see, the elevation difference between the existing bridge and the new bridge, we are going to be raising the bridge about six or seven feet in that area. So the bridge is, is coming along and will continue to go on, you know, through this winter as well. Anderson-Cohen Farm Intersection, this is over by the City of Rock Hill Operations Center. This is a, gonna be a realignment of the Anderson Road. This is looking towards East Main Street. Got all the clearing done, they'd be prepping the subgrade for the stone to be starting Cherry Road, if you've driven up in this road in Rock Hill recently, you've seen all the, all the action going on out there. All the concrete work is finished, the RCC, the roller compacted concrete, that work is done. I talked with DOT earlier today, they are going to be doing some little bit of milling of the concrete. It's not as smooth as they want it to be before they start paving asphalt on top of it, so that'll be happening this week. And the hope is to start asphalt next week. Again, that project goes from Alumni Drive up to D Street, so up to Cherry Park through campus and all.
That's gonna be done this year?
The, has a November 30th completion date, so the intent is to, that should be done this year. Also with that project, if you remember, is the pedestrian improvement project near Winthrop, there was also some safety improvements for the pedestrian sidewalk, crosswalks, things of that nature are going to be constructed with that project as well. Gold Hill I-77, so this project, the contract has been awarded. We held the pre-construction meeting late July. As a reminder, SE DOT is managing this project. There were federal funds involved, so they, they bid it, they awarded it, and they will be managing the construction on it. The majority of the work will be done at night. There's no daytime lane closures, so that will help with traffic. Now, again, it's still going to be a construction site, but at least there won't be any lane closures during the day. And it is scheduled for June 2021 completion.
Patrick, I have to ask, June 21st, when are they gonna be completed, when are they going to start?
Again, I can only tell you what the contractors tell us. They had indicated late August, early September. I know all the construction staking has been done, which is the first thing they do before they mobilize the site, so that, that step is done. I can't give you an exact day, unfortunately, but they are, you know, we've held the pre-con, the notice to proceed has been given to them. We've, they've had onsite utility meetings, kind of get all the utility companies on board and try to set a timeline there. So at the pre-con in late July, they indicated late August, early September, so that's now. So I would think it would be anytime now. You'll know when they start.
Oh, I'll know.
Current projects that we are in right-of-way acquisition now, we've got several listed here, Highway 557, Highway 2151, 160 East, Riverview Road, Highway 72, 321 Johnson Railroad Intersection here in York, and two Pennies Four projects, Bait Harvey Road and 321 Kings Mountain Intersection also here in York. So as you can see, the two Pennies Four projects, well, are off to a quick start. Those are smaller projects, obviously, but nevertheless progressing along pretty quickly. And as a non-Pennies update, but very much interest to the county, the CIB application was submitted today. Today was the deadline to get Today was the deadline to get the updated applications in. Again, those are for exit, excuse me, exit 85, exit 90, and exit 82 interchange improvement projects. Those three are the three projects we're requesting funding for. The total requested amount is $125.5 million. The CIB has indicated they're hoping in early 2020, maybe even January, to render some type of decision and let us know what if or how much we've been awarded. So we will be eagerly awaiting that notification. That wraps up, excuse me, wraps up the brief update I had, and I'll be happy to answer any other questions on projects that were not covered.
Any other questions? Mr. Winkler.
I'll just say, I guess you're happy that I don't have to ask about 97 anymore.
97 is open to traffic, yes, sir. Long overdue.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you.
Public forum is next on the agenda. Victoria Evans. Ms. Evans, I will tell you that this matter was originally set for public hearing tonight, but the applicant has withdrawn their application. I am more than happy to give you your two minutes to speak during public comment, but I will say this is no longer an agenda item for council. All right. Then I will move on to the consent agenda. Under consent, are there any items to remove from anyone? Oh, I have a motion to approve consent.
Move to approve consent.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion is approved. And again, on, under public hearing, rezoning 19-20 has been withdrawn by the applicant. Rezoning action, public hearing and consider first reading of case number 19-22. It's a UD rezoning project in Council District Five. Is there anyone here to speak against? Is there anyone in favor? Motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion is approved. We have a motion on the main.
Move to approve first reading.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Consider to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter 51, Water and Sewer Service, in order to establish a water transmission rate or wheeling rate as a rate mechanism in York County to provide for the definition of wheeling rate and to establish wheeling rates with political subdivisions within the county through the adoption and execution of an intergovernmental agreement, as may be amended from time to time and provide for other matters related thereto. Is there anyone who would like to speak against? Is there anyone in favor?
Move to close.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Is there a motion for third reading?
Move to approve third reading.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to hold public hearing and consider second reading of an ordinance to amend the York County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 155 zoning code, so as to provide for solar energy facilities, to provide for regulatory provisions related thereto, to amend the definition and use table in order to establish the uses and provide for the districts in which they are allowed to establish solar energy facilities as special exceptions in AGC and AGC I. To amend the supplemental regulations subchapter in order to address items such as setbacks, height, buffer yards and screening, lighting, glare, environmental impacts, aviation impacts, site restoration, facility abandonment, and decommission, and provide for other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who would like to speak against? Is there anyone in favor?
Move close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none.
Move to approve second reading.
Any discussion? Ms. Cox.
I would just say, I know that there was an email that came extremely late, I think it was on this topic, I haven't had a chance to open up the attachments, but as I understand it, there were some specific public comments that were redlined in a document about this specific ordinance, and I would just ask that staff respond to those and give us enough time before third reading to be able to evaluate that.
Fair enough. Any other, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion passes. I am recusing myself, I have to matter 19-12, and I have my letter for Ms. Brogdon, which I will give her after the meeting.
Old Business Number One, rezoning action, consider second reading, case number 1912, tax map number 72800007, 041, and 048 to rezone from AGC and RUD to RC2, 9.862 acres in Council District One.
Move to approve.
Second.
Three, discussion. I will say that I've had, I've had several folks call me pleading with us, asking us to take a close look at this, and I want to thank Sean Tully with Land Design who provided us an update on the community meetings that have been happening. And as I understand it, based upon the report that came back, there are, there are some concerns out on this property, and I would ask council, the entire council, to be made aware of this if they haven't. I didn't check to see who was on the circulation list, but it looks like there is a creek outlet at the railroad crossing that's partially blocked, which is increasing flooding to the existing communities upstream. There are also existing ponds at Carolina Orchards that are not performing to spec currently. And as I understand it, Land Design is doing a good job of taking the lead of pulling together the entities involved, but I think there's nothing worse when you're a public citizen and you're, you're having flooding problems in your backyard and you're getting pointed in different directions. One entity's saying, I don't have jurisdiction to cover that, the other one's saying, I don't have jurisdiction to cover that. And I'm hoping that we all can work together to resolve these issues. As I understand it, it's going to take us working with Fort Mill, it's going to take us working with DHEC, and it's going to take us working with the railroad company in order to fix some of these problems. And, and I'm not going to personally, I mean, it doesn't sound like York County is the one that has caused this, and this is not the applicant that has caused this, but to allow double the density at, at this juncture when there is clearly a problem is, is an issue. As I understand it, there has been a request for a comprehensive inspection that be conducted about those ponds to see why they aren't performing. And, and I would like to have an update on that from staff and also have an update with all of the action items that were listed in Land Design before third reading. I'll throw a second.
I'll just say, I agree, I'd like to see those action items and those ideas of what can be done to improve it and, and fix the situation before we get to the third reading.
So, so I will support second reading, but I'm, I'm going to need to see some, some clear protections for the folks in the area before I can support third reading. As for that, if there are no other comments?
I've got a comment. I'm, I'm going to support the second reading, but I think that the community meeting, I think that's probably the most important thing here, so that has not been scheduled. I know they've had a couple, but last time the residents asked if we would defer that because of that. So I will support this, but in the, in the meantime, before third reading, I would want to see the same, that same information that you asked for.
All those in favor of the motion, they say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Counsel to consider third reading to amend the Code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter 55, Animals, in order to amend Section 55.01 to amend the definitions of adequate shelter, cat, dangerous animal, livestock, public nuisance, stray, and sustenance, remove the definitions of vicious dog, and definitions of animal hoarding and free roaming cat. To amend Section 55.15 to remove the power of officials to destroy pets and specify the power of animal control officers to enter private exterior property to investigate violations. To amend Section 55.16 to prohibit, prohibit animal hoarding and require waste cleanup. To amend Section 55.9 to revise the restraint requirement. Clarify permissible tethering, add tethering requirements, add lawful passive restraint options, restrict passive restraint collars, require confinement for unspayed female dogs, remove waste cleanup, and specify a minimum area for kennels and fences. To amend Section 55.21 to prohibit dogs and livestock from running at large, change various vicious dog to dangerous dog, remove private impounding of livestock, provide authority to send unclaimed animals to rescue, allow the animal control supervisor or designated to determine the disposition of identifiable animals. To amend Section 55.22 to require compliance with the owner surrender program. To amend Section 55.23 to amend the restraint requirements for hunting and working dogs. To amend Section 55.25 to specify the conditions of abandonment. Prohibit intentionally poisoning animals and allow animal control officers to seek removal and care orders under South Carolin, South Carolina Code annotated 471-150. To amend Section 55.26E to require proper disposal of dead animals. To amend Section 55.31 to require a timely pickup of sterilized animals. To amend Section 55.3 to allow the animal control supervisor or designated to determine a suitable placement for an adoptee and to provide for post-adoption home visits. To amend the fees for impounding, boarding, and micro-tripping animals. To add owner surrender fees, to provide for a special adoption program, to provide for a public hearing, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Of course.
Mr. Roddy.
Wouldn't you know? Just want to make everyone aware that after our last meeting, and I hope we don't go on like we did last time, I got a call from a, a local attorney that questioned part of this ordinance, and it was basically the portion that says power of animal control officers to enter private exterior property to investigate violations. And this was a criminal defense attorney who brought to, to my attention, which I'm not a lawyer by day or night, that the Fourth Amendment still has to be met before anyone can authorize someone to enter someone else's property, whether it's interior or exterior. And he went to certain situations that, that brought up the fact that these, in certain instances where law enforcement wants to get on someone's property, will use certain tactics to give this governmental agency the authority to go on that person's property without that being intent, where there's other intentions that they're looking for. And they use these type instances to, to say that we have a right to come on your property, then all of a sudden it's, oh, now we see this, so now that we're able to take the investigation to another level. I just wanted to bring it to council's attention that if the property owner denies any agent, any agent operating for the government denying them the access to their property, the Fourth Amendment still has to be met, so we can't legally circumvent the Fourth Amendment and give someone acting on our behalf the authority just to go on someone's property. The property owner still has that right to say, you cannot come on to my property. So I just wanted to point that out, that that has been questioned in this ordinance and could very well be challenged in a, in a particular situation that these type scenarios exist, because as an attorney, he's representing clients who, obviously this is part of what's going on in the legal profession. But I will put that on the table to say that we've, we've come through this many times, and I don't perceive this being the last time, that pet ordinances and changes are being made. I just hope and wish, my prayers are that everyone continues to educate people on the proper way of doing things. No one up here is against educating people. I heard one of the speakers at the last meeting says, education is not working. But the day that we stop, stop giving education, opportunity to prevail on educating people on how to properly do things, I think we're throwing, we're throwing a lot of things, we're throwing a baby out with the bathwater. So let's, don't stop educating our people, let's just don't look to, to always go out, and I've been told that we're not writing fines, but when we're changing certain things in this ordinance today, I said it at the last meeting, it verifies that up until today that anyone tethering their dog was within the law. You know, some people stood up here before us and said, we passed anti-tethering back in 2012. That is not the case. What we're doing today is basically passing the anti-tethering. So anyone that's been doing, whether it's by trolley or chain, up until this new interpretation has been operating within what our paperwork has said, because we're changing words now that makes it illegal. So if we're changing wording now that makes it illegal, that means the proper, the wording that we have prior to this was legal. So I think I want to make sure I put that out, because people have been online saying we've had anti-tethering since 2012, that has not been the case. What can go online as of tomorrow is that York County has passed legislation for anti-tethering. No, no tethering will be permitted in York County. So I want to make sure that's clear, because when we sat here in 2012, we did not pass that part of any legislation. We had parameters that allow people to tether if they met certain conditions. And I think that's gotten twisted since 2012, since this last episode. And I think it's been totally unfair to, to come out and say people are, or specifically me, that bump-rider is pushing or wanting to go backwards in allow chaining. I'll reiterate, we asked for clarification, and clarification basically said that tethering was permitted. So what we're doing today is finalizing third reading that makes it illegal to tether your dog with the chain. I wanted to make sure that was clear on what we're passing. Even though that's not my wishes, it's the council's wish, so I just wanted to put that out. But I do want to make sure, and I'm going to ask the county attorney on record, given animal control officers the authority to enter someone's exterior, are we legally able to do this and still meet the Fourth Amendment requirements? Or should we take a look at that?
It's a case-by-case basis. There are exceptions to the, to acquire a warrant, and they're, they routinely evaluate the facts and go to a magistrate to acquire a warrant to conduct searches that require as much, but there are exceptions, exigent circumstances, plain view, that allow people to enter the property without a warrant. So it is a case-by-case basis, and we have to evaluate it when they arise.
And so if the property owner denies the animal control officer access, they're still within their rights, correct?
I, I can't speculate on that. There, there's, it's fact by, it's, it's a case-by-case basis, and there, there are ways to acquire a warrant to search the property, and there are at times when you can enter the property that's in plain view to address the situation.
Anyone else? Ms. Cox.
I 100% support this ordinance, and I think it was clearly needed. I want to thank staff and all the hard, hard work that went into developing this. I think it will go along the way to updating and protecting our citizens and our pets. Having said that, one of the things that's been weighing on my mind is that I'm one of those that just, I don't know if it's the lawyer in me, or if it's the, because of what put me in this position, feeling like folks didn't get their say. The procedure of how this ordinance went forward bothers me. This council allowed this to, to go and unanimously put this into committee, and then the very next meeting, retract it out without hearing or getting a recommendation from the committee itself. To me, that's something that I think we should work on as a council, and I don't think we should be doing that. I think we should allow the committee to vote that out and give it time. Having said that, it's very clear that the overwhelming majority of this council wanted to see this ordinance passed and for us to get it done swiftly and, and to get it done as smoothly as possible, and so I support that. But I do think it's important for me to at least air that.
Anyone else? Mr. Winkler.
I'd just like to clarify a little bit. On second reading, I voted against this ordinance, and I had a lot of questions about that. So I just want to clarify that, my reasoning for it, from the first day I started campaigning, I promised the people that I spoke to in my district that I would not vote for anything that I had not read and did not understand. And there were amendments made to the motion last meeting that I had not read and did not understand, because I had not read them yet, to understand how they affected it. So true to my word, as I try to be, I did not support it. And I've promised people all along, if I cannot read it, I will not support it. I don't think it's right to sit up here and just agree, you know, if you haven't read it, who knows what you're approving? So that's why I did not vote for it on the second reading. But since then, I-
So, that's why I did not vote for it on the second reading, but since then, I surprised the York County 101 class a couple of weeks ago and dropped in and got to speak to staff and get more clarification on how staff felt about it and their recommendations on it, and I will be supporting third reading tonight.
Anyone else? I will chime in and say I am glad that this is the last time I have to read that ordinance. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion passes. New business, council to approve the execution of an agreement for professional engineering services with Smith Gardner, Inc. of Columbia, South Carolina, in a not-to-exceed amount of $261,780,000 in fiscal year 2020 for solid waste management and environmental monitoring services for use by the Public Works Department.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Economic Development Committee, Mr. Chairman Robert Winkler.
Yes, thank you. Economic Development Committee met on Tuesday, August 27th. Myself and Councilmember Kristy Cox were there. We met at 11:00 a.m., and we went into executive session to get some updates that we will be getting to full council tonight, but on incentives for solar projects and also incentives for spec buildings. And we'll get the solar project update tonight and the spec building one. We didn't, didn't, we just got updates on staff's recommendations and talked about the fact that we were, we still have to discuss that more as a full council on how much incentive we want to give for a spec building versus someone who's coming in with concrete jobs and that type of thing, but there were no decisions made at that meeting at all. It was all just informational.
Thank you, sir. Any council member new, non-agenda comments? Dr. Blackwell.
Sure.
I know, I know you want.
Sure. I wasn't planning on saying anything, but I'll wing it. But, and by the way, it's not working. I think you've been working. Okay. I see.
I think that's resolved.
That's why I said I see. But I would ask for staff to, the IT department, to provide a number for this council to decide if we want to make it possible to pull up our agenda. These are touchscreens, so we could be able to pull up on this big monitor our agendas and scroll through it touchscreen and get a lot of benefit out of it instead of the once every several meetings, we have a presentation. And also that, how that would work when we do have a presentation, the flip from one screen image to the next and just come back with the information so this council can decide on that feasibility.
Anyone else?
So.
Ms. Love.
Yeah, I don't feel exactly like myself, and I certainly don't sound like myself tonight, but just wanted to invite all of you to come out to the Buster Boyd Bridge on October the 5th, and if you're interested, join me on a pontoon for about an hour's time during river sweep. Last year, I didn't participate in it last year, but I attended it, and it's quite something. So, they have offered to put us all on the same boat, whoever would be willing to come out, and probably that boat with the camera, cameraman on there. But anyway, so you could go out for about an hour, we'll bring you back at last from 8:00 to noon, but if you just want to come and hang out for about an hour and, you know, dressed to pull stuff out of the lake and off of the shore, it's something to fund and good thing to participate in.
Thank you. Anyone else? Karen, are there any citizen concerns? None. Do I have a motion for executive session?
Yes, sir. Move we go into executive session for contractual matter with Project Avalanche update, contractual matter of Project Green, receipt of legal advice and consideration of conflict waiver request, receipt of legal advice on Morningstar Litigation Update, and contractual matter of County Manager Search Firm's proposed contract.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. We are in executive session. We're going to go straight in. The council is now back in session. Do we have any matters to consider following executive session?
Yes, sir. A motion to grant waiver requests as discussed in executive session.
There's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. Motion passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We are adjourned.